We got you trained well, I like that.
I've tried doing this different ways, different years. You've all got a copy in front of you, so if you just read that one paragraph that ends with "provided by law," after you raise your right hand and read it all together, we'll be having this worn in. So raise your right hand, please.
Aye.
I have been elected to the office of alderman, ward, and foreman for the city of Alexandria, who is always where I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of South Dakota, and then I will pay impartially to my investment in general ability for all the duties of my said office of ward, ward, and foreman, provided by law.
Thank you very much. Welcome back. You too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We need you to sign off on those and return them to Debbie, if you would, please.
We can begin the actual meeting. Everyone that's here will stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to tell me again if you would have a motion to approve the agenda? Approve. Motion and a second, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And the first item of business will be to elect a president and vice president. I'll take nominations first for president, and we have ballots in front of you. If we have more than one person nominated, we'll vote with a secret ballot. So nominations are open for the president.
Nominate Carl.
A nomination for Carl?
I'd now need Craig.
One for Craig. Any other nominations? Alright, nominations to vote. We've got two nominations, one for Carl and one for Craig. If you don't vote, I'll pick them up and give them to our finance officer. If there is a tie, we'll flip a coin like we have done in the past.
Six for Carl, two for Craig.
Okay, thank you. And nominations for vice president?
Nominate Dave Burris.
Dave? You got a nomination for Dave?
I nominate Dwight Wenyah.
Also got a nomination for Dwight Wenyah. Any other nominations? If not, I'll close them, and again, you can vote from the ballot.
Results are four to four.
Okay. That's not a very good coin.
It has some tails on it.
Heads and tails, uh, what do you guys call it?
Tails.
If it is tails, it'll be the vice president. If it is heads... Okay, the minutes of the June 17 meeting, do I have a motion to approve? A motion and a second, discussion or questions on the minutes? Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And the claims, bills in between 233,003 and 159, do I have a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on the bills in between? If not, I've got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And the claims, bills in between 233,003 and 159, do I have a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on the bills in between? If not, I've got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And the current claim, 143,15322, got a motion to approve that?
So move.
Motion and a second, discussion or questions on the current claims?
Yeah, I had one that ice melt, or they have a sale on that?
Page?
I gotta find it again here. Page six, about third paragraph down. Is it just stocking up, or do they have a sale this time of the year, or?
That was an outstanding invoice from January that had never gotten through City Hall.
Really?
It must have been a sale.
Hey, any other questions on bills? If not, I've got a motion and a second to approve the current claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And communication from the public, Teresa says Teresa, but we know your name is Teresa.
That's correct. Okay, so I guess I picked a bad night to come because my support team is still on their way. And so I'm here to talk about the old armory, National Guard Armory building that you folks, I understand, might be coming into possession of. And I have been thinking about this building for almost a year now. And one of the concepts that I have sort of...
Yep.
Is putting youth activities in there, gymnastics being one of them because of the tall ceilings and because the building is large enough, and it's hard to find buildings in this community that are large enough to that aspect. So like I said, I have lots of people that wanted to be here, but like Dana Nahtigal, who is in charge of high school gymnastics, is on vacation. Lots of people are on vacation. Denise Hayden is driving here at the moment, and with her team because they just got done with practice. But one of the things that I had done earlier is, which is on the back of your handout, is earlier in the week, because I'd only known that it was possible that this building was going to be coming into possession of this building, is that I put together an informal petition. And so only a week have I been collecting signatures, but I have 163 of people that have been supportive in the concept of this idea. So what I'm requesting, then I guess from the city, is that you even think about it, to allocate this building for youth fitness activities, specifically gymnastics. I've listed out a whole list of things that you can see that the building could be used for, and down below you'll also see the numbers that Denise had put together for me, the kids that are currently utilizing the gymnastics services that we have available now, which is only summer rec for our kids under the age of 12, right?
High school too.
Pardon?
High school through grades six to 12, all things alike.
Okay, yeah, but as far as high school gymnastics, you know, we have that available, but we do not have anything for younger children. And this could be utilized every day of the week, all year long. It could be a winter activities. It could free up the Mueller Center for other activities such as volleyball leagues or basketball leagues for adults and that sort. But so I'm hoping that you put that into consideration when you're thinking about what you might put in the old National Guard Armory.
Okay, we can certainly put this in the file to consider in the future. But the reason we had a lawsuit is because that building had been used for years as a storage building, and there was a question how it wasn't used. So at this point, the building will sit empty with nothing in it for one full year.
Right.
But we'll put this in the file, and that might be a great place.
It would take a year to plan all of this, though.
Yep, okay.
But that is something that I'd really like to...
Another thing that's not heated?
Yes, of course, you know, I have talked with an electrician and working on, you know, those people, I did have an electrician say that he would be willing to possibly donate some of his time in fixing that problem, but he would need to have to go in there and find out what's, how much work is needed before he could commit to that. So of course, I'd be willing to help out with all that. I don't have all the specifics of what, you know, of course, you have to have the building for the facility first in order to, you know, create the specifics, so.
You also have asbestos suspected, and that'd be something I'd do.
Okay.
We gotta hear a little research.
It's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. And it did not get on the agenda, but Cindy Donnell wants to talk a little bit about Vision 2020.
I am.
Oh, it is.
Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Can I talk now, later, or all that?
Let's wait.
Okay.
Other communications from the public?
Don, can I actually address or talk to particular council members who, on miscommunication from the public?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. I don't want it to get on the air.
Well, everyone knows that I'm not a member of the city, a resident city, and I've tried very hard, put a lot of time and effort into making this, the Plunge, a successful operation. I understand that it's done today, and the city's proud owner, and congratulations. And I really do have respect for the city council. I think you've done a tremendous job in many areas, and I think each of you have different strengths. I even think that some of the, you know, the pointing fingers and paying attention to the finances is necessary. Maybe that's a big part of why, you know, that you've kept and been able to balance budgets and do things like that. I was, though, minorly disappointed that we originally, I was led to believe, or maybe I've heard things that I shouldn't have, you know, taken that way, but I thought that the Plunge was gonna be run, not from the city council, but in some other manner. And it was explained to me why you guys ultimately decided to do it this way. But I understand, again, that there's an appointment coming up later on the agenda tonight, and I have nothing but respect for Don, and Don's done a tremendous job for all of you in the city, and he's really worked hard. And but good, and I would like to think I'm a decent human being, and good human beings can have a little bit of difference of opinion occasionally. And I, and I talked to Don about this, and he said, well, he has to hear what the public has to say, so I'm letting the rest of you know my thoughts here. But I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Grimes before I continue. Wes, you have been opposed to the original purchase of the Plunge, but now that we, the city owns it, do you, would you like to see it opened if it can, if it can, if it can continue to generate the revenues that we hope that it can? Would you like to see it be successful and be opened year-round?
Gary, I have to. My fight is over now. It's your fight, and the mayor and the rest of the people that were pushing this. It's your fight to prove to the taxpayer you can make it work. So I'm gonna actually, I know what you guys are all talking about. You're like children. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that the Evans Plunge be put under the public safety, because I don't, I don't wanna be a part of this deal. You, you've already got your old feelings towards me.
No, I do not, Wes.
And that's fine. Well, I, like I say, my fight's over. It's, the burden is on you guys now. I hope you can make it work, I really do. I have no, I want nothing more than to see the Evans Plunge prosper and grow. I just, there's a lot of questions...
I do not have anything against you personally, Wes, and I meant what I said. It's amazing to the city government that you guys can balance books and do things, and I see some of your, some of your pointing out, where does this money go, some of that. That can be a good thing. You need someone like you on the, on the council.
That's what, that's what we're supposed to do, Gary.
Okay, but I also think...
We're supposed to be stewards of taxpayers' money.
Okay, but I also think that in the idea of the Plunge, that we need to have people or the park and rec or the golf course, you need people that project a very positive, you know, we can do it, we can get her done. And so I just did not think that you should be in charge of the parks or the golf course or the Plunge or things like that.
I know what you thought. That's why I wanna take on the parks as a pet project, but you guys got such a, a problem, so that's why I don't want nothing to do with it. I would rather see the Plunge be under the public safety. I really would.
Well, again, my last comments is I will respect whatever Don has done, he's done a great job. I just needed to, and I, and I didn't wanna do anything behind anybody's back. I mean, I, again, I do respect...
It's a small town, Gary.
Part of it?
It's a small town. I know a lot of people, I mean, so...
Well, I'm here to show that I'm not doing it behind your back. You know, I'm here to say that I just think there are other places where your talents, and you have talents, can be better utilized than someplace that takes the, you know, the positive, let's get this thing working, whether it's golf course or Plunge or whatever. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. The Evans Plunge is not a part of any one of the committees right now, like any one of the council committees. It's set off by itself. I've got the advisory board to help get it started, get it up and running, and until we find out how it's gonna work, then in the future, I guess it may be part of Parks and Recreation, but right now it is not under any committee. Any other communication from the public? Okay, thank you. We'll continue. Got some resolutions. The first one is number 18. It's a resolution, a surplus, a couple of mores are being triggered in on a bid that we took at the last meeting. Gonna have a motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Motion and a second, discussion or questions? Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And the next resolution is number 19. It sets the solid waste city fee for out there. It has been $4.50 a month per household, and this will reduce it down to half of that at two and a quarter. And I might say the person that was instrumental in getting this done was Wes, so we do have to thank Wes for that. So I have a motion to approve this resolution.
So move.
Motion and a second, discussion or questions? No discussion, I've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. That personality, you can see the changes that are on there. There's a whole batch of them that we inherited from the Evans Plunge, and the deal we've made when we bought the Evans Plunge, that we will keep all of their employees for the rest of this summer season until we find out exactly what we wanna do to run it. So I didn't even know what some of these wages were until then, last week. Also, you've got a page and a half of volunteers at the Plunge. We have to include those in our minutes, so they're covered for workers' compensation under our insurance. So the volunteers will be included in our minutes. And if anybody doesn't have or wants to look at a copy of the volunteers from the public, I've got one here. New business, we've got an application for temporary alcohol beverage license for the Winter Circle for the demolition derby. Anything a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion or questions? This will be out with the MRF for the 4th of July item of every one. Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both no. And now Vision 2020, Cindy.
They're all panicking right up there. Thought they'd have to talk. You might remember a couple weeks ago, I gave you kind of heads up on the items that have come out of Vision 2020 that we think we would like to partner with the city on to try to help make some of these things happen. So I hope you had a chance. I did get some feedback that a few of you read it and even maybe thought about some things, so I do appreciate that effort. I do wanna make sure that you're aware, I know several of you came to the community forums that we had actually in this room in January and March, and the number one thing that came up was always the river and utilizing the river. So I do, besides the river, they're not in any order of importance, but the river did come up as number one. And we know that there's plans that Dave Batchelor worked on, we've seen them, and I know most of you are aware of those, to extend the River Walk and to put in the wiers to kind of create soaking ponds and things like that. We've also talked about painting the wall that's between Minnacata and Jennings, you know, American Legion, just to make the more attractive area of the river. So basically, what we'd like to see for number one here is that we don't lose sight of the number one thing that people wanna see happen here, and that we continue to work towards extending the River Walk and utilizing our greatest asset, which is the river that flows through here. And I know there was some work done probably back in March and April, Tracy, and then things kind of got reassigned and some personal things happened. But we just wanna make sure that it doesn't fall off the radar screen, and that is something that we continue to work towards and try to make happen. And I've heard utilizing maybe inmate labor and all kinds of different ideas, and just wanna make sure that we're gonna be watching to see if things move forward there, because it is something that we've all received feedback on that the community wants to see happen. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a comment on that or not, but I'd like to at least get some kind of commitment that it will be looked at and that we can get a report on it, you know, whatever makes sense, whatever kind of timeframe. But I, we just really don't want it to fall off the radar screen, it's something that we guys keep thinking about. So I'm not sure what the exact process is here to get you to agree or tell me to forget number one.
No, we're actually, right now, we're trying to get going with finishing this concrete on both sides of the bridge.
Okay.
Batchelor was telling us that there was somebody available to keep going with this trail. Well, to date, I don't know where it's at. I mean, we keep hearing this, but he said the alumni had some money.
If you look on the handout I gave you today, I know, and I was not in attendance at the Bush grant presentation that happened here, I live in the Mueller Center probably a month ago, but I know that some people on the committee thought that this was an opportunity because it was supposed to be creative or unique ideas, and we believe that the River Walk is something that can be unique to Hot Springs. So if you look at where I kind of have a check mark, it's really the things that we'd like to see action on. And we'd really like to see some support. If we, you know, if there isn't funds available, very good question, can we try to get some funds? Can we utilize this Bush grant opportunity for something like the number one thing that the community wants to see enhanced? So I'm just, I don't know that I know that that's the best solution, that's just one of the things that came up from our committee as a possibility for helping to fund it.
What you need to do is pick out a couple, three of these that you'd really like to see happen and come to our budget.
I'd be happy to do that.
I like that idea about lighting up the gazebo. I think that, I like that.
It's made to the agenda this time. I'll go through them faster, but I just wanna make sure that we can put some kind of focus on the River Walk.
Is there somebody for the city that can write grants for that? Is that what you're kinda wondering? We've, we've had some grant writing. We haven't been terribly successful. We've gotten some, and then some we've missed. So, yeah, we can help at least. I hate to say we can have somebody do it, 'cause we get busy and then it gets put off and put off and put off.
What we found, what we saw before we went, Harley showed the opportunity for, I think, Kingfisher parks, packs of grants. When we got looking at them, unfortunately, very quick, soon before the deadlines for them, we realized that there was a lot of demographic type of information that was needed, and we just simply didn't have it as, you know, just a group of people. And we really need the support of the city to at least get that information to do grant submission. So, and I'm not saying I didn't, we didn't get that, it's just we kind of ran out of time as a team and didn't realize we needed all that data, and it just didn't happen before the deadline. We don't wanna, if, if there is a true opportunity here for grant money from the Bush Foundation, why not us?
Yeah, it's gonna be in by the month end of July, isn't it?
I think it's before that, twice a team.
Fifteen. Fifteen.
So...
Cindy, are the final plans done for the walk up to the Plunge?
I was saying the word final, but I know that there are pretty detailed drawings from Takaqua to, like, Big Bass. Yeah, Dave Batchelor and Laura spent a lot of personal time creating some really exceptional drawings that I think, you know, that the Army Corps of Engineers and all the other organizations that have to be consulted can move forward with. And I know Tracy's done some of that work already. We just don't want it to stop.
Well, it wouldn't be that hard to do, especially by the Plunge stuff now we own it. We could go the right or the gray road, right? We always talk about it.
How much is the Bush grant for?
City crews in the winter here can do some of this work. When things are slow, they get a jump.
I would, I would love to see any available resources focused on the number one thing that the community would like to see enhanced, so...
But I still haven't seen any plans.
Oh, well, they're at City Hall.
There are some, they're still pretty preliminary, but he's got details on parts of it. He's gotta get permission and approval from the Corps on anything we put in the river. So he's been doing some detailed work on the sections so we can send it in. I don't believe that's been done yet, but he's talked with them to see what their, what their regulations are, what that will allow.
Could we maybe get a report from, just a status report from Tracy at some point, or do we plan a separate meeting for this, or, you know, I just...
And I think you could even separate out the Freedom Trail project versus wiers in the river. I know it's kind of been lumped, but you might see something bogged down with the river, that doesn't mean it has to bog down on the sidewalk, so.
Fred, your idea of some of them is good. That's exactly what I thought, too, on this committee, maybe piecemeal. However, what we've learned, what I'm learning, is that there's some opportunities come up, like volunteers wanna do a project over the gazebo, get it painted, Kim has some people ready, and there's things that, opportunities just come up, and it's what I guess we're asking for is this whole list to be approved and support by the council, so that when then opportunities come up, we can get on board.
I don't think council's against all of it, but it's gonna take a lot of time and money, just like these bathrooms at Brookside, they're usually bathrooms at Brookside.
But when you just go through them one by one, I know, I mean, I just kind of wanna hear where you guys are at with the next step for each one of them. And if you tell me, hey, number whatever, I'm gonna buy it, is out of here, I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure that it's understood that, you know, it wasn't just a couple people, you know, at the bar making up these ideas. It was, well, maybe...
But you're right.
But it's really, you know, we really did solicit the community, and we do get feedback on the street. So we just feel like we really wanna make sure you're aware of what we've gathered.
I'm gonna be honest, Cindy, I'll tell you, we're having a tough time getting employees for the parks and the streets. And I'm not bashing the Plunge, I'm just saying here, when you look at the wages here with the Evans Plunge people compared to what we pay our parks and our new hires, we have a real tough time trying to get somebody to go out and run a shovel for eight bucks an hour compared to...
That's why, that's why they comment about the volunteers, is something I hope we don't overlook, because there is a crazy group of people that are really happy to volunteer.
Well, I know Rotary, they used to donate...
Volunteers on shovels?
Putting the bathrooms on shovels. I mean, these guys are, they're on, they're talking about putting a bathroom back here for us. I mean, Rotary and a lot of Lions, a lot of them groups, they did a lot of volunteer, but the problem is those guys are all getting older. And I, and I hope we do have a lot of volunteers that wanna do this. We gotta get somebody to spearhead it.
The problem, I mean, not the problem...
I mean, the Rotary and a lot of Lions, a lot of them groups, they did a lot of volunteer, but the problem is those guys are all getting older, and I, and I hope we do have a lot of volunteers that want to do this, we've got to get somebody to spearhead it.
The problem, I mean, not the problem, but the issue we've got to work through first is, will you allow a bathroom to be built in Brookside? You know, because we don't own the land, but we know volunteers that may, you know, bring in concrete and build a bathroom. So the first step is approval to use the land, right?
A year ago, you need water first, a year ago the city can put water down there, and I don't know what ever happened in that place.
But that is a very heavily, we'll skip to the last one here and continue. That is a very heavily used part of the river by the public, especially local residents, so, you know, it is something that I'd really like you guys to...
No, I'm on board with everything you want to do. I mean, me and Craig have been trying to work on a piece of property out past our pump station to turn it into a hiking or biking or picnic area, and all we've met is nothing but opposition. And I'll tell you, I mean, I think if we could tie that walk into that thing, you'd see a lot of people start using that out there.
Oh, that's a beautiful...
I mean, and it's, there's eighty some acres, it could be biking and hiking and...
I think there's lots of opportunities, this is a beautiful community, we have a, I mean, I had so many contestants' parents come in to the store this week, and they all just look at me and go, we had no idea how beautiful it was here. And these are clearly people that capitalize on beauty, I'll say. So we've got a lot of assets here, and I'm not, I don't, not saying any of these are higher than any others, but if we can get volunteers to help paint the gazebo and maybe get a couple pieces of wood, you know, replaced in the base of those columns, I mean, we could have probably painted in a couple weeks, but, I mean, nod if you're willing to volunteer. I mean, we've got a lot of people...
Is there any of the city employees that can go assess the cost to repair? Any of that? In that way, have you guys...
Right now, we have...
Right now, we have the possibility of painting the people, and so we have somebody that's looking at that, I believe. Anyway, some of that could be taken care of maybe during that time.
Yeah, I mean, there is maybe $200 worth of paint and, you know, somebody's labor to fix it, or, you know, it really isn't a lot of repair. It's just, you know, if you're going to paint it, you might as well, you know, do a little bit of repair, I mean, I think a carpenter could do it in a couple hours.
We might have enough money, and the current budget's already approved to do some of that work, so...
So I just think that if you look at any history book on Hot Springs, even back from when it was called Menacotta Springs, that gazebo was there, it is a historical place.
I'll make a motion, Cindy, that we buy paint and volunteers can help paint it, then we should get that done as soon as possible.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, the second, that we furnish the paint to paint the gazebo. Discussion?
Is this your motion?
Who's fixing the wood?
And fixing the wood, it needs fixed, yes.
Has anybody looked at it, do we know we're getting into tighter to it? Well, a week ago.
It's not going to be something you can't fix, it's pretty easy to level it up.
It is like, there's sort of like a wedge of wood that needs to go underneath on the columns, you know, somebody with a shop needs to just, you know, measure, slide it under there, just so you don't have future problems with the column.
So once you make a plan to do something, once they go to fix that, you tell us that we can do something that's foundational.
The carpenter remains, this person does need to call back, so I think there might be some weather.
I would prefer somebody go and look at it, know exactly what we're getting into, prior to saying yes to we're going to do this, that, and the other, so we know exactly what we're getting into.
Okay.
I'm not against painting it, it's not...
Oh, then my motion to have a carpenter...
But if you have that person going over to the, to the project, the old people, you should be able to go there, take a good look at it, and see if we need to do anything other than just slide a piece of wood.
So you can evaluate it and...
Yeah, that, yeah, if that's what you agree to do tonight, I'll be happy, I'll get nods over here, I'm sure, so...
So instead of the motion to paint, it would be the consensus that we will go take a look at it, and we do have some money available for some paint or whatever minor repairs it might need?
Yep, I think that's very reasonable.
Okay.
So no motion, I would draw the motion.
I would draw to say, to modify it, to evaluate the structure first, and then we can move on with the painting.
Yep, that's great. Okay, the Splash Park is number three, I think those are more aware of it than some others about that, there's already been some funds put aside to help fund that from the community. I don't know that this is something we can get a lot of answers to tonight, but we want to make sure that it's something that, you know, you're aware of, that funds are being collected again, to help fund the Splash Park, to just be a free fun place for kids to cool off in the summer. And I know the suggestion about the park was presented, I know that's not into a firm...
No, I brought it to Harley's attention at the time when we came up with Splash Park. We're looking at the north end of Butler Park, just north of the playground, which was, I guess, designated years ago for a nice park.
Nice gaming area.
Gaming area, which the only thing going through there is the sidewalk and trying to put a facelift and update the park, maybe something we can work with SBSU on as well.
I would like to see something happen back here behind the Mueller Center, we have a pump we've been looking at, and I don't know, I don't know if that's feasible or not, but we've got a pad on our electrician, $2,000 back there.
Well, and the thing too is, you know, with trying to get the Butler Park and everything built up up there, focus is more around the kids, you know, when mom and dad are up there doing a baseball game or et cetera, you know, kids up there, it's a way to just showcase the rest of our community, not just behind here. I agree, Harley and I spoke in depth of maybe two Splash Parks, you know, utilizing that, one back there, but I'd really like to push and focus the funds that I'm generating to, for the youth of our community, because I really feel that we're underlooked quite a bit here.
Okay, we'll take a look at this, and also if closer preparation to take a look at it west side, you'd kind of get caught up, because we got SBSU coming out, I think, this fall, kind of coordinated.
Yeah, Jerry's, Jerry's calling us, we're on that, actually that was suggested that we let Jerry know, you know, what the intention, what the desired intention. Okay, the fourth one is branded, small signs, those of us that reside on Rivers, North River Street a lot, get asked almost daily, where's the river? You laugh, but seriously, we get asked that a lot, and we, well, look over there, look, you know, it's very, you know, if you're from here, we know where the river is, but if you're a tourist coming through here wanting to enjoy our river, you can't see it driving down, especially down River Street. And the suggestion is, is that, and we have other local attractions that we could maybe brand, we realize DOT would, you know, has, has say on 385, but we're really talking about maybe along the Freedom Trail, or far enough back off the highway, you know, clearly it's things we'd have to work with DOT or roads or, you know, organizations that made sure that you weren't causing any kind of hazard with the signs, but we get a kick every time on North River Street when someone asks us where the river is. And I know Jackie on, and Rich on Jennings get asked that a lot as well. So we just had a cute sign, you know, that looks similar to the new signs that we're doing for the entrance, so it is a branded thing that people driving it down can recognize and realize that it's associated with Hot Springs, so that's the concept of branding, something that's visually memorable, memorable to someone just traveling through, and know that this is a public place that they could go to, like our parks and our river. And then we just, you know, this could possibly be part of that submission for the Bush Grant as well, because it's associated with our unique river, or we're aware that there's some funds available from the bid organization, and believe that those funds are meant to go back into the community, and maybe that's something that we could look at as well for using the creation of these signs. Five, the depot's really kind of dark at night, so maybe while we're focusing on that, we could have some kind of lighting, lighting around there that just highlights that cool little building and Hot Springs. And the teepee got put up today, so we can check that one off. You'd be surprised, I mean, if you're from the city, you come out west here, and Cowboys and Indians, it's the whole kind of thing you want to see, so I think it's a really good thing, and I think it'll get people to stop. So thanks for allowing that. But just really, the request is, you know, somebody maybe take a look at how we could do some lighting there, maybe it's just solar lighting or something, but highlight the depot. Six, which is on the back, we had a group of people that thought that lighting up the waterfall at night could have been more of a night attraction, people stop and look at that waterfall all day long. So it is something that people really enjoy in this community, and maybe if we can make it something that they enjoy in the evening as well, maybe more will stop at night, so this would definitely be something that we need city support on, and maybe some...
Checking the cost of those, probably maybe be taken care of with the changes, right?
You know, LED lighting, it's very cheap and very, you know, low cost to run, and if you position it right, you know, it's, a couple of them will really do a big thing to the book. So something we'd like you to look at as well.
Oh, we know how much better the museum looks at night, since it's...
Yeah, that's a really good example.
Compared to what it used to be.
Oh, yeah.
Never saw it.
Yeah, so just back on some... Number seven is, you know, a city and a chamber of commerce type of item. I know there's discussion about funding some, a person to do media, keep the websites current. I looked at our website two months after All-Star closed, and they were the number one restaurant. It was alphabetical and they're All-Star, but what a sad thing to see on our website, it was another number one closed restaurant in town, so, you know, I think it's really, really important, that's how people see us now first, is through our websites, through social media, mobile apps, as people walk, you know, coming through town, I know people have picked up on my Facebook page that have an app that's, you know, just says what's in the local area. You know, so we need a tech savvy type of person there, you know, some things on YouTube. My, my soapbox thing is our cable public access station, I think we should have monitors in all the hotel lobbies showing what's going on in Hot Springs where they can visit, maps, you know, whatever, things scrolling along the bottom, you know, Arts and Crafts Festival, Mammoth Days, there's just countless opportunities with utilizing the cable public access station, and not only for sharing information with, you know, tourists, but clearly residents can benefit from that as well. I think more people watch TV here than read the paper. You know, you've got youth and, you know, a large population of TV watchers here, I'll say. But tourists, you go and you sit in your hotel room, your, the first thing you do almost is turn on the TV, comes up channel 19, here's what's going on in Hot Springs tomorrow, stay another day, or, you know, do something in the morning as opposed to sleep in.
I think they're taking applications for that position now.
They are, and I just want to make sure that we, make sure that the candidate has the skills that we're really looking for, and if we're not fully utilizing all our media opportunities here, it'll be disappointing, personally, and we need to make sure that that's staffed properly and that clearly their roles and responsibilities are defined to benefit residents and tourists.
May I ask, who interviews the person, the applicants?
Right now, it is going to be a chamber position, it's a bid board will pay part, the city will pay part along with the chamber, that's what's been proposed. It's not done yet, but that's, that's the direction we're heading.
Okay, so the people on that, the entities, will be interviewing, doing the interview?
I don't know if the interview people are set up, are they hardly?
The Chamber of Commerce Tourism Board, I believe, is the one, at least the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors anyway, is the ultimate responsible party for doing the hiring. They've solicited applicants, I know they've had several good ones, they've, I believe, have already interviewed as well, so I think they're in their selection process eventually.
Okay, and then I'll put out, yeah, I think that monitor for the TV in the hotel lobbies, what an excellent idea for the BID money, I mean, it seems like that would go hand in hand, so just throw that in there.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that they've thrown some money into it as well. Yeah, I don't totally believe that that's being watched maybe as well as it could be though. I think the skill assessment was not done upfront and defined, so I, I'm hoping for the best there. Number eight, that Val's still hiding over there, maybe you want to, you want to talk to that, or you want me to?
Well, they had put in their last Vision 2020 thing that they wanted to have a inflatable thing in the parks or something for movies, and through our, since our theater closed, I know they're looking at sometime hopefully reopening, but every year for the past four years, we've gave anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 to the local theater to show one tobacco-free movie. It's a website, it's, many of the movies you see, it just doesn't depict tobacco use for kids in it, and this year we have $3,500 for that. Without our theater, we will lose that money if I don't spend it, then it just goes back and you don't get it, they don't reallocate it or anything else. If you guys did want to do that, we could give you the $3,500, the only contingency is it would have to be done, and we would have to show a movie before October, that is the end of my grant.
Why couldn't we use our theater here?
Our theater here?
Yeah.
Well, because they're closed. Oh, the theater here?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, we have a theater here in the Mueller Center that's really underutilized, terrible.
I can hear, but the only problem that has ever come with the theater here is, I've talked to people about the movie that they, movies that they want to do here, but every person that I've spoke to says I cannot show a movie here without buying a movie license. When I showed one in the Custer School, $100 movie license, I don't care if I rented it from Video Store and I showed you a Lion King movie that everybody's seen 100 times, you need to pay a $100 license fee, which I can do, but I would have to do 35 licenses, and I don't know if anybody here can coordinate 35 smoke-free movies, but, but I can. It's just because it would be a bigger thing. This, it's up to you guys if you want to do it, if not, I can pay it to another place, but that $3,500 would help you guys if you wanted to do it.
Sure.
And if you did, I'm not sure, because I don't have it in front of me, if you got it up before then, I also have $500 that I could throw on top of that for, as long as with five of those movies, you did one smoke-free theater ad, one smoke-free ad. And all it is, is promoting parents not that kids are influenced by what they see in movies type stuff.
But you wouldn't have to do all 35, would you?
No, if I did 35 movies here, I would have to pay for 35 licenses, $100 licenses.
But I mean, even if you did five?
Right.
Because you're going to have to pay it if you do it in the park, aren't you?
No, I could actually make it all in one. We, and that can be split, that's up to you guys, this was just a proposal.
Why do you have to pay that if you'd use it here, I guess I don't understand that.
This was just a proposal. Every other time I did it, last year I did two theaters, I did it here and the Custer Drive-In, split the money. This year, when I was at a council meeting last time and they talked about this, I told them, just so you know, this money is available. If the city would want to have some movies in their park, then there's $3,500 for you if you wanted to build just a plywood screen to show that.
No, I'm confused, why are you going to pay $100 here versus in the park? What's the difference?
There, I have to pay it there too.
Okay, so either way, you're going to...
Yeah, so it would actually be 3,400 if they did one movie, then it'd be 3,400 is what they'd get. But all I'm saying is it would pay for you to erect this thing, if you wanted to make a plywood sign and you guys wanted to have employees do it, it'd be paid for. Whether you do or not, it's not my problem, I'm just, threw it out there for you guys if you wanted. It's grant money, it's yours if you want it, if not, somebody else will.
So Val, it's, okay, so that we're all on the committee here in agreement, understanding you, $3,500. So Val, it's, okay, so that we're all on the committee here in agreeance, understanding you, thirty-five hundred dollars. We only have to present one smoke-free movie?
Yes, if you want.
And so basically you can do that, show one smoke-free movie, it covers you.
And chances are, you're gonna show more than one. That, that smoke-free movie site, you know, has half of the movies that are out there. You know, it's not that hard to find a smoke-free movie. Last year, the movie that played at this local one was Harry Potter and the Deathly Hallows was smoke-free. You know, that qualified, so this theater got half the money. So, you know, it's no big deal. And the smoke-free ads, you would want those to be probably on smoke-free movies, and they might not have to be. You could say the following movie's going to depict these, we just want you to know this, or whatever, so.
So Val, we did present a movie in Mueller Center here, we've got a projector, we've got a screen there, I'm assuming, right?
I'm assuming.
I can do all that too.
Can that, can that work?
Yep, and I've spoke with them.
Let's work out the details between meetings instead of that.
Yes, I just, I just, I just threw it out for you that the money is there, what you guys decide is your, your business.
Or do we need to have a separate meeting for it?
Well, you can't really accept it till you know your, what they're gonna do. Because are they gonna be able to do it before October? And like I said, whichever way would best help the city, that's fine by me.
And I'm confused now, as the committee, wasn't the goal to go out and get the screen in a site for outdoor attractions for the community? That's the goal, isn't it? Am I wrong?
I wasn't on that anyway, so can I?
The goal is to bring out the families and all of that, but what she's saying is you gotta show at least one movie to get that. That money, if you gotta pay a hundred bucks to showcase the movie here so that you can get the grant money, you'll have thirty-four hundred dollars left over to get the stuff to build up.
And that's exactly what I, okay, that's right, that's the goal we want to go for, is to be able to get the equipment so we can have nightly, summertime outdoor movie theaters, movie theaters.
Well, I don't know if there was gold specifically for nighttime, just to promote a movie to it.
Well, on a screen, you'd have to show it.
No, it was nighttime family, super entertainment.
Yeah, it started out as the objective here. Val graciously offered this grant money, so it became a bigger opportunity, I'll say.
But you have to use it before when?
Before October. So, I mean, there's lots of options, like you said, Wes, it's up to you guys how you decide.
So I was hoping with the city, if you want to allocate, take those funds and earmark on for those purposes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you, Val, appreciate you coming forward with that. Okay, nine, and nine is probably a tougher one, but I know, hardly we talked about city trails or maybe, you know, somebody had maps, and there's a lot of city trails, you know, nearby that are being underutilized, not marked, not really known, like Battle Mountain Trail and things like that. But it's just one of those things that we've got this great asset that we're not fully utilizing. And we see potential there because we see a lot of, you know, the opportunity to be a truly world-class recreation destination and that fits into that objective. So I don't know, I have a whole lot of additional information there, except for it could be an opportunity for some grant money maybe, but maybe just kind of get it in front of you, make, make sure you're aware that there are people that would like to see those trails a little more groomed or available, or marked, or at least marketed, so people knew they were. It could be an opportunity for designing. The tenth one is, we have the Spencer School, the doggy bags in the parks and by other than the L I know, not really sure where else, but it was brought to the committee's attention that those aren't always stocked and there's plenty of opportunity to use the baggies.
Problem in the past with the baggies is people steal.
Yep, that came up, and we, we know that, I'm, we discussed that, but it was still something that, you know, people believe needs to happen.
No, that's important, but you have to take in consideration, you said, on a regular basis. They weren't putting them out on a regular basis, they're just being stolen. Whether somebody's actually using them, I don't know. But I know in the past, in one week, they cleaned them out twice. That's within days.
Somebody probably needs to look at that, because I'm.
And I agree, that's an issue.
I'm guessing that regular basis maybe isn't happening anymore, so at least needs to be looked at.
Yeah, we.
Because you can see when, you know, if you're looking in the box every day when you walk by it, it never gets filled. Somebody could, could have came through at night, I guess.
Well, one of my things that I had down here is, you know, if you talk about all these volunteers, if you could get a pet patrol, that could be somebody's job just to go and give them the bags and they can stock it every couple of days. Because I'm not lying, I mean, I'm not picking on our parks department, but we are a runner's team.
And we did talk about that as well with Wes, having a, I think there was organizations that actually did it when they were first installed.
Say, if you had someone that would just.
So I guess like really the commitment here requesting is, you know, who buys the bags?
Yeah, and I think in summertime is probably more important just as a visual, for the people coming through town, you know, they're looking at these things, and they've got animals that are walking through and they don't see them.
Plus, I got a lot of people, they keep telling me that there's a lot of, there's a lot of dog waste up there.
Yeah, Centennial Park was brought up, was a big concern. And you have, you know, events there, so, and I know some youth organizations have had activities there and it's not pleasant for the kids, so.
Well, doesn't the city empty the garbage every day down there at the park thing?
Once a week, isn't it? Once a week?
Once a week. It depends on the activity of.
As needed, actually, probably.
Well, you know, even if you had, that city employee wouldn't take them a couple of minutes just to check, to see if they need to be refilled, they could carry the bags right in their truck with them and then have another organization assisting, you know, you got a couple of people, tech team in the issue and.
Yeah, so we're open to options, appreciate the ideas and keep it in mind, maybe for your budget.
That's your big.
Budget some baggies.
That's budget.
Yeah. But that's come up, so I need to share. We also talked, we talked about the last item here, the bathrooms, if we're excited. It's a very heavily used public area, there's no bathrooms, the city owns the property down there. You know, if there's something that can be done, or some plumbing out there, and, and, you know, if we can get step one or two going, you know, I'd be happy to work with getting volunteers to help.
We have to run a new service line to the park, half block.
Hard fix, the one we got.
Somebody got a bag boy?
We have an issue.
It goes through the middle of Brookside Park, I mean, it goes through the middle of Brookside property.
We own Brookside.
Yep, we do.
Pretty much.
Well, I appreciate your time, and, you know, I'd be happy to do whatever it takes to have additional meetings or discussions or, but we will be asking, you know, for status on these. And if you come back and say, we are not budgeting to buy baggies, we'll go back to Plan B. But, you know, if you can, we'll try to, we'll make it work to get those refilled, you know, and that's just.
Why couldn't you have them stocked, say, at the depot or chamber or different places and have the signs up available at these locations where they can have control over considering selling all the time?
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, okay, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
I've got a question for a fast one. On the Freedom Trail, we had somebody volunteer to pour concrete, I see there's equipment back there, wasn't the hiring done?
Yes.
Why? Somebody volunteered to do it?
They volunteered to pour it, but not to put the units in. We didn't have anybody volunteer to put the forms in, just volunteered to pour it.
And they volunteered after we released it out of the ditch. So kind of some hard feelings to be. Take a volunteer any day, no matter what, even if there is a bill.
Okay.
I've forgotten the address.
Yeah.
I was out at Mammoth Junction Saturday, and a lot of people are using that VA Cazeebo that was put out there.
Oh, good.
Yeah, but there's not much information in there.
That all blowed across the road the next day. Sunday, it was scattered all over the highway, so they need to refine their system of hanging their maps and information.
They're looking at like plexiglass and hope and.
I know they have some, on the one section where they have it, they got like a tri, a tri thing in and they have a picnic table in each section. And on the one side, I noticed they have like a wooden sleeve with some of the Hot Springs postcards.
Actually, an idea that we discussed in the chamber of board meeting.
Let's wait, I'll continue, I'm sorry. We'll check on you if anyone else to ask about it.
I just wanted to let you know that people are using it.
Okay, good.
Not just sitting there.
All right, thanks. Need to set a hearing date for July fifteenth, propose to seven fifteen for a restaurant visitor license. Do you have a motion to set the hearing?
Some of.
Motion in the second, any discussion or questions?
This is for the reopening of the Mexican restaurant, so we're getting a lot of food establishments in the community.
Are we gonna have a price on that by that time?
Any other discussion or questions? Got a motion in the second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Airport engineer, we've taken proposals from several companies for the engineering at the airport. Harley, do you want to bring this up to date or is somebody else here?
The Public Safety Committee is in charge of the airport. The two council members sat on an interview committee along with two individuals from the airport Advisory Board, myself and Tracy. We solicited RFP's request for proposals for engineering services, the South Dakota Aeronautics, I don't know if it's requirement, but every five years, an engineer has to be selected for any airport in South Dakota. And so every five years, every airport goes through this same exercise. They have a choice of continuing with the existing engineering firm that's there or they can solicit proposals based on a set of specifications which was done. We selected three engineering firms, H D R, S E H, and K L J. And those are all acronyms for various ones, so if you test me, I might be able to get them all out. But K L J is the existing engineering firm that has been doing Hot Springs Airport for a long time here. They have brought on a gentleman from the federal FAA, so they've got some expertise. So that's one of the positive items coming from the K L J side of things. S E H is the firm that just recently completed the city's sewer facility plan for the wastewater treatment plant. And you had an excellent presentation as well that brings some good qualifications. And H D R had done work previously for the city under the water and developed the water plan for where we may need to drill our next well when needed, if needed, checking into our reservoirs and that sort of thing. So all three firms are excellent. K L J and H D R have representatives in the Rapid City area. S E H is out of Sioux Falls and provide services, all of them provide services throughout several state regions. So all good quality folks. Dave and Craig, if you need to comment, one of the concerns was that we've been with the same firm for a while, do we need some new blood in the, in the area? K L J provides services to several airports in western South Dakota, and so there was some concern. There was a question from the committee, do we have to have a five-year agreement? And we need to have a five-year commitment, but we do not need a five-year agreement. It could be a three-year agreement with a two, two-year renewal if we chose to go forward with the agreement in that format. We are in the middle of an environmental review as well for the future projects. That's been delayed because of the hanger project, and now that that's done and filled up, we're filling up, we're ready to move on with a new long-term plan for the airports. The recommendation, and I should let the other two speak, but the recommendation that was coming out was to give S E H a try for the next time, whether it's a three-year contract or whether it's a five-year contract, it's up to the council. The recommendation that was coming out was not an easy decision, it received a lot of conversation.
What do we have to act on that, Harley?
There's no deadline, there's no push for it. If, if the council would like to visit with the engineering firms individually, that could be arranged. If you want to do some more questions and answers, that's not a problem either.
These guys all operate as needed bases then, or how is that?
We've got a couple of representatives, by the way, from Cadmus Jackson here, K L J, Cadmus Lee in Jackson, right? Did I get that right? Yay. In the audience, so they've got some good experience as our current engineering company. They, on call, you know, when we need something, they observe, watch the conditions of the airport on a regular basis. Now that we have an advisory board, the engineering firm have not had that in the past to rely on for assistance or recommendations or requirements. They're available as needed to complete the five-year capital planning project, C I P, I think they call it.
Okay, thanks, Harley. Do you have anything to add?
I'm, I'm pretty much good explaining.
Does the council want to make a decision tonight based on the recommendation? Or do you want some time to look at the proposals or talk to anybody?
I make a motion that we go with who we decided to go with.
A C H? Got a motion in the second to go with the C H. Discussion, questions?
I think it's good that the council go with the recommendation of the committee that made the recommendation.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Rates?
That was.
Rates cheated on us?
That was wandering.
How does that work?
It's based on their hourly rates for the type of work that they'd be doing. So, you know, there's no way to know what the planning process is or what, you know, if you're putting in a runway, that's different than if you're putting in a lighting project, for instance. Or if you're doing the weather reporting AWACS, I think is the acronym for the, what the pilots use when they're coming in for the, you know, for the weather, and there's Super A WACS. So, you know, there, you know, there's several options to go and the engineering firms would provide the recommendation based on their experiences, what you should or shouldn't use.
Any other questions, discussion? Got a motion in the second to go with the recommendation with S E H. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no? Thank you, thank you guys for being here. We've got a temporary alcoholic beverage license to approve and it's got dates on there during the Miss South Dakota Pageant, which is over, and also wedding coming up July the thirteenth. They had thought the application was in and it wasn't, so we've already missed the Miss South Dakota Pageant.
So they didn't have a, they didn't have a license there yet?
They did not have a license there yet. They thought they had one, but they realized after, after the. So I'd entertain a motion to approve this, basically the Mueller Center wedding on the thirteenth.
I'll make a motion for this, July seven, thirteenth.
Got a motion to approve, second, and a second, discussion or questions?
The only thing I got a problem with is we got three kids that went into court because this whole. because they sold liquor to underage people at their bar, so they can be more careful there. Still a problem I got right now is that.
Okay. We will make sure to visit with them about that. And then, thanks, Craig.
May I ask who checks on these? Verifies the paperwork prior to the...
Must be Mary, she's signing the thing.
I see that's... Does Chris level check that paperwork prior to the event?
Yes, he does now. He did, I believe, in the past, is that right, Harley?
Correct.
But he's looking at this now, to make sure, or his checklist.
Any events that are scheduled through Chris, he's making them apply for the temporary license if it's, if the event requires.
That one right there was a stupid mistake.
Any other questions, discussion? Got a motion in the second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. And committee reports, Carl, did you have anything from the ministry?
No, we didn't, we did meet last Thursday, and we discussed some salary provisions, but I think we're gonna wait until we can get through everything, all the paperwork we've got, before we come back with a recommendation to the council.
All right. Okay, thanks. Public works, Dwight?
A lot of our meeting was talking with the VA wall committee, and the city can make this success, and they're expecting a lot of people for this, so we talked about bleachers, traffic flow, shuttle buses possibly, if there's a lot of people, utilization of Garden Street, motorcycle parking, police extra patrols, and we talked about handing out promote Hot Springs flyers during the event, and bringing in the street sweeper every morning to clean up afterwards, and it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty big event, and I hope it grows green.
Probably gonna get more restroom portable...
Yeah, we also talked about garbage pones, party pones.
Okay.
Hope the council, the city cleanup days will be the week of July twenty-second through July twenty-sixth, and we will be taking the roll up. After doing the... I just have a clue to that, we'll take electronics, but it has to be separated.
Okay, thanks Dwight. Public safety, Craig, you have anything?
We do have a...
Okay. Have I doubt that you have anything yet, Wes, from cultural regulation?
Probably not.
Val, did you have anything at the last meeting?
We have them here. Have the bill right here for it, so they will be installed shortly.
They are here, as the bill was sent in, not up yet, I guess. Okay. Harley?
I just wanted to let you know, even though we had a lot of calls, and the mayor took some grief on the blocking of the street for the Todd Becker Foundation Block Stop event, they wanted to thank the city very much for helping in the process of that event. Everything from the city council, to the trash, to the detour signs, were a huge blessing, and we couldn't have done it without all of your help. Thank you again, and have a great rest of the summers. They were very grateful, and they felt the event was successful as far as what they were wanting to accomplish with that event, and closing off the highway. I wanted to note that Edith up at the library had completed some library training institute through the Northern State University and South Dakota State Library. She's received an additional certification for the second year of a four-year process that she's going through up at the library. Wanted to make note that we have entered into and started the process with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, which is our insurance company, as far as the police professional coverage is concerned. We are able to obtain a five percent credit on our premiums if we started several training activities, and Debbie is getting bombarded for the employee personnel files with the online training that is being done through that process. So, we have entered into the agreement with the Public Assurance Alliance, and we should see a five percent reduction, or a credit, as they call it, in our next year's premiums because of the activity that the police department is, is taking on. And just a note, fireworks is just around the corner, and we do have these posted throughout the city, but if you have not seen it, we do have our list of what the police department will be allowing as far as fireworks being shot off in town. So if you have an interest in that, please stop by City Hall to get that information.
Is it also posted on one of your webpages?
Probably not, yeah.
We have webpage training Wednesday morning at nine AM, so we'll, we'll see what we can get accomplished as part of that training.
May I ask a quick question on that ordinance? I, I, my wife and I run the stand just south of town. There is a vague term in there, who is, who would clarify that vague term for me? It, it pertains particularly to large aerial shells with ordinance. I've been in the industry for a long time, don't know what that means. I have talked to a county sheriff and a county, or a city police officer, and both of them didn't give me a clear answer. As a matter of fact, they said, you know what, if it's in this store and you could legally sell it in the state of South Dakota, they were going to allow it. But I wanna make certain that when somebody from Hot Springs walks in, that I am ethically covering what you, as a city, are expecting. Because if there's a limit, the last thing I want is, is somebody say, well, those dirty fireworks guys sold me this saying that it would work. And this is gonna sound, sound silly, but my wife and I do actually respect the folks that come in, and we want them to, to enjoy their fireworks and not have a problem with the city.
What is the largest thing that you have?
The largest thing is, 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 it's an aerial shell that goes up, explodes, burns up in the air, but the question is, is what is, yeah, what is considered a large aerial shell with ordinance? That's what I don't have clarification on.
Well, I'm curious, where, where did this ordinance come up from? Where, was this previous to this council?
No, this, this is what's in the city ordinance here.
We've got a copy of the previous type set at, at the...
Last year, I guess, we never, we never had the fireworks, so maybe that's why we never saw this last year, but I didn't know that we had a restriction on any, I was at your store this afternoon.
Yeah, I wasn't there, unfortunately.
I mean, my neighbors...
Well, right now, according to that, there isn't anything that I have in the store that's illegal, unless that vague term that says large aerial shell with ordinance. I don't have a clue what that means.
We're gonna leave it up to Bob Evans, our police chief?
Bob Evans, thank you.
And if anything is large enough where it disturbs people around town, and we get complaints, then we're gonna ask people not to continue it.
My neighbors didn't read this, apparently.
Well, like I said, I, I wouldn't make certain that I understood what the, what, because they come in and they ask me, and I'm not official by any means, but if, if I understand what the council or the police chief is, is directing me then, that's exactly advice I'm gonna give to them. I appreciate that, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
You didn't have anything else, Harley?
No, sir.
Okay, well, the committee assignments are out, you've got them in your packets. Nothing is set in stone, if there's something that doesn't work, if there's a better way to do it, let me know, and I can make any changes that are necessary. Also, in your packets, there's a notice that's going out, like, probably within a day or two, for the vacant properties in Hot Springs for the water, as part of that water ordinance that was passed earlier this late this spring, early summer. Just wanted to remind you of that. That's all I have, other than we've got two quick, I think they're both gonna be quick out, it was an executive session, so I would entertain a motion to have an executive session for vacant houses.